Good evening. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners for Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, if you could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call, Madam Auditor.
Commissioner Cora.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Present.
Yova Korm.
Thank you. Consideration of the agenda.
Most to approve as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And consideration of the approval of the minutes from September 4th.
Move to approve?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consideration of the claims.
This year, this week, we have payroll ending September 13th, 2019, in the amount of $1,226,682.10 and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $1,463,753.33.
Most to approve as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Before public comment, I'd like to invite our county clerk, Kathy Cromeck. Could you please come? She has another commitment, so we'd like to take care of her business first.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm here this evening to have the poll locations approved for the general election. I think you have a list, hopefully. And the LaPorte and Michigan City locations are all the same. What is different is in the spring, Kingsford Heights was decided, so we don't have that one, because they were all Democrats. And then we have only two races in two towns, Long Beach and Michiana Shores. The other towns, five of them, didn't have any competition.
Contested races, okay, all right. You know, I just wanted to mention that we were looking for other options, but we'll implement that next year for early voting, as well as for trying to not use the Michigan City area schools, hopefully next year, so we'll keep working on that.
Okay, sure. I really did not want to change it in the middle of...
During the middle of the year?
No.
We heard you, Kathy. We heard other people as well.
It's very confusing.
Entertaining motion now?
I entertain a motion.
I would make most to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Before I open, we have one other item on the agenda before we go to public comment. We, as everybody knows, we have a great group of individuals who work for our county. And among those individuals, LaPorte County IT Department has been well-recognized, and especially when we had this ransomware attack, the response that was spearheaded by the IT department was very good. We were back in operation quickly. And recently, State Senator Michael Bohachek presented an award to the LaPorte County IT Department. So Darlene, can you come up here, please? We'd like to present this to you, to you and to your department.
So we were having our rural broadband meeting on Monday, and Senator Bohachek walked in and handed the plaque to Darlene, and had a private conversation. And I said, whoa, hold on a minute, this is so important. I think what's particularly important is that Darlene led the county response to the ransomware. And if you look at how ransomware, and she got some heat from the community, saying, you know, "We didn't do enough," or "We didn't anticipate well enough." If you look at how ransomware has attacked communities across this country, counties, cities, towns, and has crippled them. So Lake County, I don't know if anyone has followed, Lake County had ransomware, they chose not to pay it. And they are now writing paper tickets, and their police departments are having difficulty because they don't have access to their records. So I think we should really commend the county's response. While it was a difficult time, and Darlene's department and others were working 12 and 14 and 18-hour days, we were able to minimize the damage, and I think that, really, great kudos to you for that leadership.
And I would like to thank you all, and Senator Bohachek also, for that recognition. You know, we're here for the citizens of LaPorte and LaPorte County, and do everything we can for the employees and citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to make one comment. And I think after our attack, I have been reading, I have been listening, and it has been affecting many, many, many communities all over the country. And I think, when I went to Washington, when the meeting of the White House raised this issue, and I'm hoping that all of us, through our collective efforts, continue to ask our state government and the federal government to have a coordinated response, because it shouldn't be this way. Recently, I heard that there was a hospital in the suburbs of Indianapolis, Hancock Memorial Hospital, and they had a ransomware attack. And so it's something we should all take it seriously, and make sure that our elected officials take it seriously, and give enough resources to fight this menace.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Before we open this for public comment, I've been asked to remind that we, all of us, we want to have a transparent county government, we want everybody to give their views on various issues that affect them and that they're concerned about, but also, it's extremely important that it is done in a very civil manner. And so I just wanted to read three of the paragraphs that we adopted at this county commission meeting, when we had this resolution that was adopted. Item number five, "The presiding officer may prohibit comments which are deemed frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a person's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, and may request any individual to leave the meeting when the person behaves in a manner that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting." Item number six, "No person may present orally or discuss at any meeting of the board any charges or complaints against individual employees of the county, department heads, professional advisors, or elected officials without first presenting such charges or complaints to the board through the presiding officer in writing, signed and verified by the group of persons making the charge or complaint." And item number seven, "Remarks by any persons addressing the board which reflect adversely upon the character and motives of any other person or group are out of order. Also, attacks in the form of inferences, insinuations, and inventors against the character or motives of any persons are out of order." As a board, we believe strongly that we, as elected officials, our department heads, professional advisors, and employees are all servants of the voting public, and we benefit by a wide range of views and input as we deliberate and consider important issues confronting our county. The guidelines of our design to enhance orderly and efficient receipt of public comment, while at the same time ensuring a level of civility and decorum appropriate for a properly conducted business meeting of the board. I just wanted to remind everybody, this is very important. We want to get the input from everyone, but let's do it in a way that is respectful, and then we do it with civility. So with that, I'm going to open this for public comment. Anybody from the public who wishes to address the commission at this time? Yes, sir?
Louis Spear, 6434 South Thurlowden Road. I think you were probably talking about me, but I'm going to speak anyway.
First of all, I'm not talking about you, I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, but I'm going to pass this out to all of the members. It's a letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This goes back to the ongoing problems on the Shurs Ditch, and I have a request in this letter. And the reason I came here today is, number one, I wouldn't be here today if the Drainage Board did their job, and if Shaw Friedman had not intervened and stopped the stop-work order on that project. Every law in the state of Indiana has been broken. I'm going to read the letter first. This is to Shaw Friedman, LaPorte County Commissioners. Shaw, I'm here today to ask you that you require the city of LaPorte to provide to the surveyor's office all the stormwater runoff calculations that will discharge directly or indirectly into the Boyd Boulevard drainage project that ultimately flows into the regulated drain, the Shurs Ditch. Also, all of the manufacturing, commercial, and dense housing areas that drains into Shurs system via the Highway 2 East Lincoln Way drainage ditches. Included will be all businesses south of Highway 2 East that flow directly into the Shurs 1,500 feet to the southeast, namely Walmart, with all their outlets, the strip mall east of Walmart, and all the car lots, businesses east of Fail Road. And Shaw, you elected to override the Drainage Board vote to stop work on this project. You elected to crawl into the bed with the city in this manner. You may wish eventually that you had stayed out of this manner. Your entry has contradicted every Indiana law that is on the books, every drainage law that's on the books.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morzynski, do you want to address consideration of the drainage board? Do you want anything?
I had the Drainage Board last week, but I was in Washington, DC, so I don't know what exactly transpired at the meeting. There has been a question, though, as to what is the authority of the Drainage Board? According to the Drainage Board law, they have the authority to stop the project, but the project has not been, was not stopped. I don't really know what the latest is, I haven't talked to our attorney, Mr. Adamsky, about that, but...
I'd like to read one section that, I underlined in red, and also in black, the board refers to the Drainage Board of the county. And regulated drain means a regulated drain, it's court drain. I'll go through this as quickly as I can. The reason I'm asking for all this rainwater runoff calculations is because it was originally designed as a rural drain for farming. I have maps back there, if you guys, if you want to look at them after the meeting, but the original 1916 assessments, you know, I have that map. I have an overlay of the city where it is today. Walmart, none of those industries that they're going to dump, you know, into the Shurs has ever been assessed to drain into the Shurs Ditch. We have a 54-inch backup at Ohio Street, and there's still, water is still flowing in the ditch. But I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can.
Mr. Spear, you know, I think the three minutes are up, but here's what I'm going to do for you. I am going to ask Commissioner Morzynski, who is on the Drainage Board, to confer with Mr. Adamsky and Mr. Friedman, and then we'll get in touch with you.
Okay, I have one, just one paragraph. A municipality acting under a statute other than this chapter may not construct, may not construct, reconstruct or maintain a drain that is located partly or wholly within the corporate boundaries of the municipality and will flow directly or indirectly into a regulated drain that is subject to this chapter. That covers the whole ballgame out there. Everything was overruled, everything that's in here, if you will read it, has been overruled by the county attorney. And I also have, that I enclosed in there, was the emails that Shaw stopped the Drainage Board's attorney, you know, from acting.
All right, do you want to respond?
Yeah, just briefly, and I've got, I know you weren't willing to provide me an email address last time you were here, but I want to go ahead and give you a copy of what I sent to the Drainage Board on September 8th, so that you've got a copy of it, okay? City Engineer Minnick confirmed in his September 6th email that on Wednesday, August 28th, the contractor switched the temporary construction dewatering discharge from the low point adjacent to the LaPorte County Conservation Trust property to the constructed basin. He further noted at that time, construction dewatering was no longer going into Shurs Ditch. It was at that point I advised the Drainage Board that if, in fact, there was no threat to public health or safety, or the drainage activity did not violate rules or regulation of the state or county, that I respectfully suggested a motion to reconsider their injunction. To my understanding, Mr. Hendricks responded to me last Friday, indicating that there was a motion made at the last Drainage Board meeting to suspend the injunction until they could look at it to make sure the outflow is really off and going west into the LaPorte Stormwater System, which eventually leads to the travaged ditch. That's how it was left. To my understanding, at the Drainage Board, they suspended the injunction request until they confirm other information, but this way, Mr. Spear has a copy of my correspondence. We believe we've done the appropriate thing, and we can respectfully differ, and I think that's all right. We can respectfully differ, but I have, if the city had gone to the Drainage Board...
Mr. Spear?
Yeah, 1974, I'm answering his question right now. 1974, the surveyor, Charlie Hendricks, surveyed the Shurs Ditch. If they went to the surveyor's office, which they're required to by law, because the surveyor and the Drainage Board is over that project, they would have found out, and those maps of the '74 survey would show, which I have them right here to show you, that it flows into the Shurs Ditch.
Thank you. I'm going to delegate this to Commissioner Morzynski since the Drainage Board, could you get together with Mr. Adamsky, and then whatever we can do to help this situation, we'll try to do it.
And let's indicate to the record as well, because we occasionally have issues come up, where it would be helpful if a particular homeowner would retain counsel. There are certain things that the county can do, and there's certain things the county can't do. In a situation like this, where Mr. Spear has a 40-year-old grievance with the city of LaPorte, it would be helpful if you or your kids would retain counsel, bring those claims to the city of LaPorte, either the Board of Works, the city council, or other entities. There's just a limit to what the county is able to do, and I would say that to you as respectfully as I could. Thank you. Then why does the drainage lawsuit, you have to go to do? And that's what the benefit of counsel would mean for you, Mr. Spear. I would urge you, with all due respect, there are a number of folks out there who do property law, who could be of advice and counsel to you in bringing your claims, either to... It doesn't show me in there next month where I have to go to the city to address a regulated drain. I've given you my best respectful advice, and that's... It's not respectable advice, it's no advice.
Mr. Morzynski will be in touch with you, and so let's follow up on that. Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public who'd like to comment? Anybody else from the public who'd like to comment at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Department head comments. Anybody, any department heads? Yes?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I wanted to, as briefly as I possibly could, come before you and address an item that has presented itself, I believe through social media, but is one of our top priorities in the Office of Community and Economic Development, and that is the LaPorte County's Rural Broadband Task Force. I'd like to meld that into an overall, very brief report of some of the activities that we have going on within the Office of Community and Economic Development, but I'll start with this particular item. As a result of Commissioner Mathias's recommended formation of the TAP, Rural Broadband Task Force, we have since met five, a total of five times, established both a mission and a vision, and it broke into four particular committees to subdivide this very heavy lift of a project. And just very briefly, those committees are the Influencers Committee, Mapping and Statistics, the Communications Committee, and then the Digital Inclusion Committee. As I mentioned, it's a hot topic. I would best liken today's demand for broadband and for connectivity to the body's need for fluids and water. It has become just about that important to everyone's daily lives. So commerce and education, healthcare, all are in a constant demand for increased access to broadband. So that being said, we did aggressively apply to the most recent state's issue of grant round of funding, which was for unserved portions of the state of Indiana. We submitted, we were able to convince two private contracting telecommunications companies, Comcast and Automated Data through Acme Communications, to aggressively apply for expanding their fiber optic networks, and they did a tremendous job. It would have made available approximately 575 homes directly connected to fiber optic. However, due to some challenges and a very limited access that they made available, that being the unserved, we were unsuccessful in the round. We've been encouraged to reapply under the underserved category, and I know it sure sounds like semantics, but we're going to be patient, and we're going to encourage both of these vendors to reapply, since they've already done the heavy lifting and have prepared the grant applications, and then reapply at that particular time. But I did want to point out, because this issue, and I know many of your listening audience are very in tune with what's going on within the broadband task force, I wanted to give an update. We, as a task force, have broken into these committees, and as we are currently in the process of setting up one-on-one meetings with all of the telecommunications and broadband providers, internet service providers as well, we will bring each individual provider in, meeting with them one-on-one, to begin to complete the all-important fiber map and service territory maps, which will give us the ability to then have that next discussion, and how they will methodically continue to deploy connectivity to residents, not only residents, but industry. We've got manufacturers that are directly impacted by this issue as well, and we are working on a daily basis on this particular topic. So I thought it'd be critical to come and give an update to the commission, and just point out that the committees are working diligently at each one of those levels, and with the necessary technical experts at that level.
One of the things, I appreciate you bringing this report to us, because it has been a lively topic on social media. And as you know, I follow and try to make sure that people are aware of issues that come up on social media. There was a lively debate about where and why broadband wasn't being fairly disseminated across our county, and so I shared those comments with you. And I guess one of the byproducts of the Rural Broadband Task Force is pressure. So we all know how politics works, whether you like it or not, that's the game of business, and it's the game of government. By applying pressure and showing that there's a group of very talented community volunteers, tech people, who are all joining forces, I think that's how we get the Comcast of the world to listen to us, and to realize that it is not an option for our communities anymore, for our families. Everyone needs it, it's like having access to a water line. So that's where I think we really want to encourage our task force, and for those who are listening, to have them use their pressure as well, because that's how things get done. The companies are following the money, and it's a cutthroat industry, and we need to have them hear us and understand our needs. So I think that that's a, I encourage us to keep on working, but also, I think it's important that our community know, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. That's, I hear so much frustration about it, and, you know, because we, politically correct or not, we raised an issue that's a really, really hard issue, not just in LaPorte County, but counties and cities all across the country are struggling with this, because the companies that are making the money are looking for critical massive customers. So if you're on a street that has, you know, five customers, they're really not going to want to look at you, because it's a really hard way for them to get a return on their investment. So we need to figure out a public-private partnership, and I think that's the overall effort that people need to know. We're diligent, we're working on it, it's not going to happen by the end of next week, let's put it that way. So thank you, Tony.
It would be very important, just to point out, I know that you have individually forwarded several of those that have not only taken the survey, but have also forwarded us communications from some of the vendor companies, bought an exorbitant amount to get them connected. Those individual homeowners, and some are businesses, but the homeowners, those have been compiled, they're being grafted on the map, and they are not lost, they are being grafted, and they are, we're keeping that data.
So could you add that?
It's an active map that is building, it's a living document, and it's going to be presented to our vendors.
Because you're on the public record, could you again let people know what you need, the information that we need from them, and how to get that to you?
Most importantly would be the individual resident's home address, whether or not they're currently served by a vendor. If they are served by a vendor, what's that download and upload speed? And they could go to speedit.com or internetspeed.com, and it will gauge the quality of their connection.
Tony, while you were doing this, sorry for the interruption, there is an app called TestIT.
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 Dot com?
Just TestIT, it's an app.
TestIT.
And then while you were making the presentation, I did this.
You tested our speeds.
And our, right here, right here, our connection is below the FCC benchmark. Our download is 18.96, and our upload is 2.05.
Okay. It's still pretty fast.
Yeah, 25 on the, it should be 25 on the download and 3 on the upload, so right here.
At 18 megabits, Titanic would download in less than one second, the whole movie. So that's fast.
Yeah, TestIT. TestIT. So anyway, the reason I wanted to mention this was, we started it as a rural broadband, but many of my patients who live right out of Michigan City, or near Michigan City, they are complaining that they don't have good internet access. So it is something much more prevalent than just in the South County. So I think this is something we need to continue to pursue. And when will the next set of grants be announced, do you know?
They have not yet announced the grant funding round, but one of the next items on your agenda is a request to travel to Washington, and myself, as a representative of the task force, have requested travel to the Broadband Communities Conference. The lineup, which I had distributed last month, is, it does a very good job of explaining all of the financial resources available to communities to help and assist in deploying additional broadband resources. That's the only reason I believe it's important to go. It's modest, it was an item, it was requested within the budget, so there's no additional resources needing to be allocated, but the only reason I mention it, it's an item coming up on your agenda.
You know, since you're up here, and since you brought that up, let's go ahead and take care of this while you're here. And that was item 9A on the request.
Question, is that being picked for from economic development?
That's correct.
Yes.
Most to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just in conclusion, Darlene just came up and mentioned to me, any resident listening that wanted, if they have access, if they were to go to the library, if you go on the current La Porte County website, they can take that survey and also make us aware of the lack of a connection. And then they're going to fall onto the live map, and we will immediately begin to communicate with them as to where we're at in the process.
Process.
So I wanted to make you aware of that. Laportcounty.org, and it's under the broadband survey.
Broadband survey, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
Are there any other department heads who would like to comment?
Nice.
I've got my notes on my phone, so forgive me here. Steve Al, Director of La Porte County 911, how are you guys today?
Good thanks, good thanks.
I came here initially to read a letter asking your permission to go in front of council, but since I thought, since I'm here, I might as well give you an updated report anyway of what things, what had been going on at the center.
Okay.
So I'll do that first, if you guys don't mind, be brief about it. We have been working with Smart 911, and I'm sure Commissioner Mathias can brief you more than I can, she went through the presentation on it. I think this will be a great tool for public safety, especially in the schools, and if we can get a partnership with the school system of all of La Porte County, again, I don't want to get into logistics of it, it'd be a long presentation, but it would allow teachers with an app to call for help, signal for help, we can find them in the room, and that's just one of the many features that that would have. So I've been working that project. Thanks to our IT John Myers, he was able to give us for free rapid SOS, which allows, and I can do a presentation at a later date to show you what that's all about in private or on a webinar, but what that allows to do is allows the citizens of La Porte County, almost the same as I just explained about the teacher, they can hit an emergency button, and we will know not only where they're located, what floor they're on, if they're in a multi-floor building, we can narrow that down, and that would be great for law enforcement and all public safety, really. So I'd like to publicly thank John Myers for doing that for us. Before I read the letter, last but not least, the hard-working professional 911 dispatchers. I have been working hard, I'm sure you've seen the Facebook posts about them, and I've mentioned before about them being recognized as public safety officials instead of telecommunicators, because they're not. And I was informed, I had a phone call from Senator Bohacek, and it's, my due diligence has not gone unnoticed, and he is now forming a committee to have Indiana recognize dispatchers of all of Indiana as public safety professionals. That is thanks to the hard-working people of La Porte County, we have initiated that, so the whole state has us to thank for what they've, for their hard work and due diligence and what they've done, and we hope to get this passed. Couple stumbling blocks that he's asked me to research, I'm helping him with what I can, but I think in 2020, we might have, the state legislature may finally recognize dispatchers as what they are, and they're public safety professionals, and the citizens of La Porte County need to know how great these dispatchers they have here that care about their public safety. And now I'll go to my letter. I'm asking permission, Dear Honorable Commissioners, I respectfully request your permission to go in front of council at the September 23 meeting. The purpose of this request is an appropriation request for the general fund for new chairs for the center. Chairs are falling apart, they're like, I can relate to squad cars, we replaced them all the time, these chairs, they've got a lot of miles on them. I'm also asking for approval to fund a new wireless paging system that would replace our current T1 system. Ironically, today, one of our T1 lines, two of our T1 lines went down. This might be a little bit Greek, but we use this, if you're a firefighter, you'd understand that when we have these pages for fire and EMS, they can't hear them because these lines go down, and I have found a wireless solution that would rectify that. Chicago's using it, this vendor uses, we use our area, but also Chicago. It also would eliminate those weak pages, and it's cheaper than what we're paying in maintenance costs with what we've had with our T1s. So I'm asking your permission to go to council for that.
What was the amount that you were requesting?
It's going to be, the initial project would be $35,000.
Okay.
For setup.
All right.
What's the patient?
I'd ask, can we do that without being on the agenda?
We won't be able to get you in on the September 23, maybe the October meeting.
Fair enough.
But, sure.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Yes, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other department head? Is there any other department who would like to address? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the requests. We have taken care of request A, request B, consider permission, request to approach council for additional appropriation for replacement of computers and printers. Andrew McGuire.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Per our replacement program for our computers and printers, which Darlene helped us design and work on, we have four printers and four tablets in our ambulances that are due for replacement. The printers are in our bases, our ambulance bases, the tablets are in our, in our actual The printers are about 10 years old, nine to 10 years old, so they're well due for replacement. The tablets are like a Surface Pro, they're not as old, we're replacing them just a little early due to the fact that they're not holding up as we expected them to. We've been replacing a lot of parts and pieces. We're replacing them with a more rugged version, and in the long run, it'll actually save us money because we won't have the maintenance expenses with the chargers, parts and pieces, the screens are even cracking from the vibration in the ambulance and the use, everyday use and the hard use we have. So I'm asking permission to approach the council for additional appropriation of $13,837 to complete this project.
All right. Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Prosecuting Attorney John Lake, consider permission to use old Superior Court III courtroom in the complex. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, how are you today?
Good, thanks.
Um, two things I just want to talk about, first of all, was the use of the Superior, old Superior Court III. When it's not in use, I'd ask for permission to use that to host a grand jury, so they can take evidence. We're in the process now about, about to file for convening a grand jury. Can't get into all the details of different things, but we need to have a place. I've talked to Judge Stahlbrink, he's going to allow me to, because you need a judge to actually convene it, to actually pick the jury.
So you'll be able to coordinate with him?
Right, right. I mean, we're going to be able to use the courtroom at the initial stage, but after that, it becomes a problem, because all the courtrooms are in use all the time, except for Superior III, except during for problem-solving courts. So I was hoping that maybe you'd give me the permission to use that, otherwise I'm going to have to figure out, I've been trying to think about how to do this best way, but logistically, it may work out to use that, since it's right here in the same building.
Is Judge Stahlbrink okay with that plan?
Well, Judge, when you have a grand jury, basically the grand jury is brought in by the judge, and then once the grand jury is convened, there is no judge sitting over that. The, basically what happens is the grand jury sits by itself, and they control where they're going to go, what they want to review, what witnesses they want to talk to. The only legal advice they can get is from the judge or the prosecuting attorney. And so normally, what happens is the prosecutor is in there with them, giving them legal advice and directing it. We use it for both investigation, as well as review of true bills or no true bill, and whether they want to review a case. We have several cases, in fact, that we want to use this for, for investigative purposes, because we then are allowed to then subpoena witnesses in, and come in who would then be confidential, anonymous, on some of these murder cases that we have. This is how Marion County does a lot of their gang shootings, they bring people in, you just have a convened grand jury all the time, and that's kind of what we're, we've kind of hit some roadblocks in our investigations. So that's one thing I'd ask for approval of, and the next thing was that I've been really looking and thinking about, basically anonymous tips, that used to have Crime Stoppers, they don't have Crime Stoppers, I know we used it in the past, years ago, when it was in effect in this area, and it was effective, I was talking to Adley Price about it today, and they had used it, and they'd gotten some good information before, and to be able to solve two murders back then. So my research over the last three months on this, because I've been thinking about it for a while, was to find something that does that, and this weak tip has been in existence since 1972, and they have 1-800 numbers, and it's totally anonymous. And they also have, they give awards as well, so it's kind of an interesting concept. I've reached out to them, I got a proposal just today on it, so I couldn't get it on the agenda, but I wanted to bring this before and print this agreement out, so I can hand it to, with your permission to give it to Shaw to review. The link, the cost is usually eight cents per capita, so it'd be about $8,800, they have quartered $7,500. I'm going to be going out, having Mary contact, Blue Chip, other organizations that may be willing to fund this, the cost of it, or we're just going to fund it from our infraction referral, but I'd ask the permission to go before the council and seek that, because this is something that is effective, it's being used in other counties in Indiana. And the one thing that I really like about it is, you have the 1-800 for crime, 1-800 drugs, 1-800 arson, fraud, but it also has 1-800 bullying, which I think is a very, very important thing, that's one of the reasons why, because I was looking for something that would deal, help deal with this bully issue that we have, and help deal with suicide prevention and other things that we're trying to affect going forward. So I'd ask for permission for both of those things, and answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Lake?
No. I love that you're being so proactive, so I think that's terrific.
Well, I wasn't sure if I got the right answer, but you know, we redid that courtroom for Judge Stahlbrink, and we've been making arrangements for him for parking for his staff and to use the courtroom, and, well, he asked first, so as long as we're going to work that out, to understand that Judge Stahlbrink had. Oh, no, no, I'm asking when it's not in use. Okay, that's fine. You understand, so there may be, there may be, there may be times that if I have to, you know, a grand jury can meet, convene at any time, as long as they meet together. So I can have a different place, I understand the construction, and I'm looking at, this is before Superior II gets over here, I know when they're supposed to be coming over at some point, and I'm hoping to be able to get in there, get some of this work done on some of these cases before the end of the year.
In that case, motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
And another motion to approach the council.
Just provide this to Shaw to review, and I will forward a copy of this to you, each of the Commissioners by email. I printed off one copy for Shaw, so he didn't have to do that, but it really deals with the issue, the program costs, and basically, the neat thing about this is that it does pay for rewards if people want them, but the way the rewards are paid are through the postmaster. So they basically say, what is, if you want to, you call up, and they do not take any personal information whatsoever, so it's totally anonymous. And then based on if the person wants an award, it's from $25 up to $1,000, and that's decided if there's conviction at the end. So they, it promotes better tips, but the payments are coming through, you only get a number, and then the payment would go to the postmaster, and they then go to the post office, basically, and get paid through, you know, a check from the, or money order, however they do it.
Motion to grant permission to go to the council?
No, actually, we need to first review it, and then probably have the agenda this at the next meeting.
That would be, if it passes review, we'll have it come back, that way the Commission can pass on it, and then forward. I just got today, so I just want to.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
We'll take care of it.
All right, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is item D, which we already took care of. Old business, consider service agreement between Michigan City, city of La Porte, Purdue University Northwest, and the county with the transit triangle.
Shaw, a comment?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Commission, as per your request, it is a revised service agreement, going only through the end of May of 2020, and that way, the Commission can reassess at that time if it's your desire to continue the service past that point, but I know that concern by the Commissioners was that we're already in the school year, you've got PNC students that very much rely on it, and so, and I think you had approved the funding component, which was out of professional fees, but we're comfortable with the agreement as proposed.
I just had one comment, recently I was approached by both Michigan City and La Port, that their ridership has increased because they do some transfers, I believe, and I said, you know, wait for two, three months, and then bring the data here and share it with us, and that's what they're going to do, and then at that time, we can discuss what to do next year, you know? All right, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. New business, consider permission to approach the council for Laserfish to scan clerk documents in consideration of review participation agreement in the FireEye Election Security Pilot Project by the Secretary of State's Office. Darlene.
So the Laserfish, the scanning of the clerk's office, and also it'll be juvenile probation, their old archive files, it would be scanning them in and microfilming them at the same time. This is a request that came at budget hearing from the county council for me to look into this, so I just have the proposals, and it would be next month that I would be approaching council for that, because I didn't make the cutoff date.
All right. Any questions regarding this Laserfish?
I guess, Darlene, just for the public's understanding, can you explain what the purpose of the project is, so that everyone understands what we're spending the money on?
Okay, so all the court records that the clerk has over there, a company would come in, scan them all in, put them to microfilm, so that that's our permanent copy, which the clerk requires for record, you know, keeping, because some of those records we have to keep forever. So it would just be a process of digitizing and microfilming those records, so that we could clear up some real estate, you know, in the courthouse, get rid of some of those file cabinets and the old boxes, and kind of organize things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, that's a good idea, though, because we have got.
It's a huge project.
Room is full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this would be only to propose to tackle La Porte. There's a whole nother thing for Michigan City.
I'll entertain a motion regarding Laserfish right now, and then we'll consider the other one.
I would make most to approve.
It's a fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now regarding this FireEye Election Security Pilot Project, there was a contract, Shaw, you were able to review that?
Yes, we have, it's a pilot project, Secretary of State's Office is doing with a certain number of counties, but we're comfortable with the contract, and I'll let Darlene talk a little bit about the protectors.
That is for any computer that connects to Sandbox, which is for the election, so any of the clerk's office, any of the voters' PCs that go through the internet, it's just an extra layer of protection. To protect those PCs and the election records.
Very good.
Good idea. Motion to approve that also.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then item B on the new business is consider interlocal cooperation agreement between the town of Trail Creek and the county regarding the building code inspection. Attorney Beechey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We got approached by the town of Trail Creek, they're really looking for an electrical inspector, but I drafted this agreement to include all of it, in case they have one of their inspectors leave. We have a similar arrangement with the town of Michiana Shores. Annemarie tells me that they have capacity to do it, because there's not a ton of inspections, and the county's paid $50 per inspection, and we've set forth a billing and payment process within the agreement.
County comments? We're comfortable with the agreement, it is consistent with other prior interlocal agreements, it's also a testament to how successful our building department has been, that the towns are wishing to contract with us for services, so yeah, we're comfortable with it.
So the $50 is a flat fee?
Yes.
Okay.
If we get into anything more, this covers just the basic inspections on electrical and plumbing, if there's anything more complicated, then it would be an exception to the regular fee.
Okay, I'm just, the Commission always has to pay mileage, it comes out of the Commission's budget, so I'm just wondering, like, that would require that we would be, our inspectors would be driving to buildings in Trail Creek, so how do we accommodate for that?
They have their own budget on that, I wouldn't you mention.
Well, you know, I'm not sure how they do it on the stuff themselves.
The planning and inspection has their own mileage account.
So they would take it out of that amount?
I'm sure.
Yeah. So Joey, does the $50 seem like a fair amount to you, including the fact that we would be using county funds for mileage?
I think to begin with, to begin with, it's a fair amount, and then see what happens after that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
And we don't expect a lot of inspections in Trail Creek to begin with.
We don't expect them to call you for a lot of inspections.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the way it works in this county, is that a lot of them, they get caught, trying to do without a permit, so.
Anyway, either way of looking at it is, if there is new construction, new buildings, new tax revenue, so it could benefit.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Mathias.
A couple of things that I wanted to share, Mr. Alt mentioned Smart 911, and we did spend about an hour and a half on a call with a national vendor. It is an interesting concept, where law enforcement and agencies across the county would be working together and sharing information in case of a crisis situation in particular. Some of the information about schools and hospitals, I thought was really interesting. Some of the information about schools and hospitals I thought was really interesting. I've asked them to look at some dollar amounts because no use going after something that we don't have any money for. So that's, that's going to come and Steve's done a great job of, of getting more information. This afternoon, Commissioner Mrazinski and I were down at La Crosse Volunteer Fire Department where they had an incredible event. The, the chief there, Chief Aaron Rust and his team, applied for a grant. The volunteer fire department always looking for ways to supplement their, their budget. And he filled out a grant and I read the grant, it's really very well done, to the Gary Sinise Foundation, which he happened to just find in a random search around the internet, looking for foundations or grants that would help either law enforcement or rapid responders. He landed $100,000 grant for breathing apparatus that is so high tech and so cool. It'll keep the firefighters safer. It is really awesome for their rapid response. And I think all of the fire departments across the county are going to want those same breathing apparatus. They showed us, there were I think six, six of them, Rich, and six items with the compressor were $99,000. So it's high tech, very expensive, but real big kudos from the Commission, I believe, is in order for the La Crosse Volunteer Fire Department, especially Chief Aaron Rust, who did the heavy lifting and wrote, wrote the grant, which was unbelievably successful. So I wanted to share that. And then the last thing I wanted to share was the meeting that we had on Monday on the county website redesign. We had about 50 department heads and elected officials join us in the room for a brief review of the project, where we are with the project's goals. So a county official whose name will not be shared at this function asked about an hour before the meeting, what in the world are we wasting money on a county website redesign for? And I was in my car when I saw that come across my, my text message. And I kind of had a lot of time to think about it because I was in Portage and I was driving over to the meeting. And I laughed about, the last time we had an update to the website was in 2003. And in 2003, some of you were probably around and you probably had a flip phone and you thought we were pretty cool because you had your flip phone. Or you had a BlackBerry. And I remember, I was mayor of Michigan City at the time and I had a BlackBerry, which was considered state of the art. Anyone in here have a BlackBerry now? Aha, see? Not a one. Do you know that iPhones weren't, weren't invented until 2007? And so our website was 2003 when most of us had dial-up, brought a dial-up internet. So, you know, suffice to say, a lot has happened in technology since 2003. And our website is, it has 15,000 hits about between every 30 to 45 days. So that means 15,000 individual users are trying to get information off that very archaic, clumsy, slow website. There's a lot of stuff on there. Darlene, you and your team have done a great job for all these years, but it is time. So we have a local company that is very tech savvy. They handle about 100 clients that they, they provide web, web design and, and construction for. They are working with us. We've had numerous meetings internally. The meeting on Monday was to bring all the department heads up to date on where we were, what the timeline is. So we're hoping that this will be completed by the end of the year. Are, a lot of people had questions that were very good. So if you're a department that already has your own website, like the Laporte County Perks Department has a really good website, they can link to our website, they'll have a tab on there and then we will direct traffic to their website. So people have a one-stop place to get, gather information, whether you're a citizen and we hope to improve our customer service, or if you're a visitor and you're trying to find out what, what's happening in Laporte County. Or you come here, you go on vacation, you're like, wow, this is a great place to raise a family. Maybe I want to buy a home here. And so we want to make sure that we have user-friendly things as well as it's an economic development tool. Every community across the country has a very beautiful website, most of them do. And ours just doesn't tell our story. So it's, it's, we can do much better. Laporte County, as all of us know, is a great place to live and work and we want to be able to share that information so that our own citizens have lots of information and so do people who want to invest in our community or bring jobs here even, even more so. So I have a document that I can share. We, we are having a super user group that will be a group of employees who are going to help us keep, make sure that the website is efficient and has current information. So we've polled a lot of our staff in all the different departments. I have to say, there was a lot of excitement in the room by the time we ended the conversation because people are excited about having a much more welcoming, efficient and mobile-friendly website. So you, all of us have our devices, we'll be able to actually pull up information, whether it's an agenda for a meeting, whether you're looking for information on a permit, whether you want to find out about the Scarecrow Festival, whatever you need to know, we're hoping that we will have all of that information on there. So lots going on. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be ready to launch. So I want to share that update.
Thank you very much. And before I turn to Commissioner Mrazinski, Diane, can you send a letter congratulating the fire chief in La Crosse for the phenomenal grant that he got? Thank you very much. Commissioner Mrazinski.
Thank you. Today is the, happy birthday, United States Air Force, 72 years today. I spent, gave them four years, four of the best years of my life. And Diane, her husband was in the, Nick was in the Air Force for 16 years. She was the Air Force wife. So happy birthday, Air Force. As you know, I was in Washington DC last week, meeting with our Congressman on behalf of all veterans and military. That was my eighth reassignment by the National Commander in Chief on my 18th trip. It doesn't get any easier, let me tell you. And I have a proclamation, I'd like to read, State of Indiana Executive Department, Indianapolis, executive order proclamation to all whom these presidents may come greetings, whereas 1,589 Americans are still missing from the Vietnam War as well as 7,663 unaccounted for from the Korean War and 72,707 from World War II, though thousands from World War II are assessed as unrecoverable deep sea losses. And whereas the families and friends of unaccounted-for Vietnam War veterans as well as countless fellow veterans and other Americans still await recovery and identification of their remains. And whereas successive administrations have enforced, reinforced commitment to accounting for our nation's POW MIAs as a high priority of the United States. And whereas the State of Indiana commends, supports and shares our nation's commitment to account as fully as possible for Americans still missing or unaccounted for from our nation, our nation's past wars and conflicts. Therefore, now therefore I, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor of the State of Indiana, do hereby proclaim September 20th, 2019 as POW MIA Recognition Day in the State of Indiana and invite all citizens to duly note this occasion. And as you may remember, we still have one guy missing.
Mr. Transky.
Yeah. Mr. Transky, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Few, few observations. One is we had a meeting of the insurance committee today and our health insurance expenses are $83,000 under the expected or budgeted amount. So we are looking at getting the, the estimates for next year, which we'll be able to present next month. I also wanted to mention that I serve on the workforce, Northwestern Indiana's Workforce Chief Electoral Officials Board and we had a meeting with Blair Milo, our former mayor of Laporte, who currently is cabinet official in the state government. And the theme of that was how to develop talent, how to attract talent and how to retain talent in our state and also in our county.